What we're gonna have Sarah do tonight is mute everyone and then the planning board members that want to speak, raise your hand, indicate in some way that you want to speak and Sarah will let you. The planning board members or if I call on someone.
You need to make me the host of.
I have to make you the host? Okay, let me do that.
Kathy, may I ask a question before we go?
Yes.
Are you planning to close the public hearing or has that been done already?
It's been done already.
Okay, great. When did that happen? Just for my record.
Oh, right after the public hearing. I didn't leave it open because everyone seemed satisfied.
Gotcha. I thought maybe you had left it open. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
I could have left it open, but I didn't feel it was necessary. They all seemed to have had their chance to talk. Where can I make you host, Sarah? I'm looking, I know it's down here, but I don't know where.
I think you have to, on the right side under participants, I think you have to click on my name.
Okay, I did. Okay, I see it. No, I don't. Make host. Okay, gotcha. Do you want to change it to Sarah? Yes. Okay, you are now the host. We've got that taken care of. Okay, everybody ready? We're going to start. It's now seven o'clock and I'm gonna call the Town of Batavia Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, March 2nd. Because of the coronavirus pandemic and the state and federal bans on large meetings or gatherings, in pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order, the Town of Batavia Planning Board meetings will be held electronically via Zoom. Minutes of these meetings will be posted on the Town of Batavia website. This is meeting number 95611617964 and our password is 934310. So I'm now calling the Planning Board meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, Kim?
Yes. Palmer Casey. Paul, you're muted.
Oh, everyone's muted. Oh, Sarah, we have to unmute them for this. We're doing a roll call. Sorry.
They're all still muted, Sarah.
Nope.
They're not now. All right, Palmer Casey.
Here.
Paul McCullough. Paul McCullough. I can't hear you. Luke Paganello. Don Partridge.
Present.
Jeremy Lyles.
Here.
Jonathan Long.
Here.
Steve Tanner.
Here.
Brooks Holly.
Here.
You're all set, Kathy.
Okay, Dan Partridge will not be participating in the meeting tonight. He will recuse himself and he is here because as a landowner, he may have some questions or may have something to answer. So he will be at this meeting, he will not be participating in the Planning Board meeting. We have our two alternates, Brooks Holly and Steve Tanner will both be participating tonight. Now, has everyone looked at the minutes of the last meeting? That was on 2 February 2nd, 2021.
Motion to accept.
Motion from Paul. Second by Brooks. Is there any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very much. Okay, now our agenda looks short today because, yes.
We had two public hearings as well for Janice Smith and Batavia Solar, meeting minutes.
Oh, I didn't copy those. I don't have them with me right now. Did everyone get a chance to read the minutes from the public hearings?
Yeah. I make a motion to approval.
Approve which one? The first one was?
I had Janice Smith.
All right, Janice Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve Janice Smith's public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jeremy Lyles? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you. And the second public hearing was on?
Batavia Solar.
Motion for approval. John?
Who did that? John Long? Is there a second?
Second it.
Palmer Casey? Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you. Okay, now we'll go ahead to our agenda. Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
The next, we have two things on here and I'm gonna go to Dan Lang right now because we have to do a seeker. We had two separate Part 1 seekers. We've combined them to one and I sent them to everyone. I know you didn't have a long time to look at it, but I hope you did. Now, I'm gonna ask Dan Lang to explain what we're doing with this. Dan Lang?
Yes, Dan Lang here. Actually, what we did is we can't, the reason we asked and requested for this to be on one specific seeker, even though it's two separate projects, is they do coincide hand in hand and it is one overall project as far as the environmental goes on this project. It was submitted at the same time. Thus, we're doing this under one seeker so we're not segmenting and separating it out for the seeker purposes. This is still two projects when it comes to the site plan review and this is still two projects when it comes to the special use permit. But environmentally, we are looking at this overall as a whole for the seeker process and the seeker purpose. Due to the fact that in New York State, we can't, we're not to segment the seekers. I know I've been kicking stuff back and forth up until today and I know Kathy's been on the phone with Steve and Steve Tanner and a few others back and forth with comments to make sure that we're at the position where we're at tonight to go ahead and be able to actually complete the seeker. But that's all I have on that and that's why we did it this way. Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, so you all should have a copy of the Part 1 and the Part 2. I've asked one of our engineers, Steve Tanner, to review this and to help us go through it. I would like anyone that has any questions or wants something clarified or wants to add something, raise your hand, Sarah will let you speak and feel free to do that. So Steve, I'm gonna turn this part of the meeting over to you. Steve Tanner?
Thank you. Actually, I just do have one question. I assume did the coordinated review prior to filling out Part 2 because I know that we got comments back from various agencies, but I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, we did the coordinated review. We did not make ourselves lead agency yet, so we should do that by a motion.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion?
Be lead agency.
Okay, motion by Steve Tanner, seconded by Paul Marquez. This is to be lead agency to do the seeker for this coordinated review. Okay, Steve, back to you. Oh, no.
Order.
We have to have a vote. We have to have a vote. You're on, Kim.
All righty. Steve Tanner.
Yes.
Palmer Casey.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Jeremy Lyles.
Yes.
Jonathan Long.
Yes.
Brooks Tolly.
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski.
Yes.
Kathy, do we need to declare lead agency for both of the, both of them or just the one?
It's a good question and that could be Dan Lang or that could be Steve Mountain. Who would like to answer that?
You'll just be declaring lead agency once for this seeker.
Okay. Just once.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, Steve Tanner, we're back to you.
All right, in an email, I sent it out later today around 4:30 or 5:00, but I did send out, you know, how I would have filled this out. Kathy said, "This is my opinion, it needs to be our opinion, so if there's anything that we need to discuss, agree upon, you know, talk about, let's do that as we go through this." But as you know, Part 2, there's 10 pages, I think 18 or 19 questions and you have to answer each of the questions. If the answer to the main question is yes, then you go through each of the items below. So on this project, impact on land, the project action may involve construction on or physical alteration of land surface of the proposed site. Answer's yes, in my opinion. And then you go through A through H. The proposed action may involve construction on land where depth of the water table is less than three feet, no or small impact. The proposed action may involve construction on soaps of 15% or greater, no or small impact. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed generally within five feet of the existing ground surface, no or small impact. The proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material, no or small impact. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases, no or small impact. The proposed action may result in increased erosion whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides, no or small impact. The proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area, no or small impact. Everybody agree? Excellent, I'll keep going. Impact on geological features, the proposed action may result in modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site, i.e. cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils and caves. My answer to that is no. Generally, you agree with me? Okay. Impacts on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies. We do have a wetland delineation report in the packets that we've been received and there aren't any wetlands on site. I answered no to this question. Okay? Impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in newer additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or in aquifer. I said no on this one as well. Impacts on flooding, the proposed action may result in development on lands subject to flooding, no. Impacts on air, the proposed action may include a state regulated air emission source, Impacts on plants and animals, the proposed action may result in loss of flora or fauna. I originally, in what I said you guys, I said yes, but in the meantime, I did receive an email from the town engineer that had indicated that the long-eared bat, which was identified by, through the seeker process, is possibly being on site, is actually been reviewed by the state and feds and is not on site. So on this one, I would actually change my answer to no. Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Impact on agricultural resources, the proposed action may impact agricultural resources. I said yes, so I'll read all the things below it. The proposed action may impact soils classified within soil group 1 through 4 of the New York State land classification. I said no or small impact. The proposed action may sever, cross or otherwise limit access to agricultural land. I said no or small impact. The proposed action may result in the excavation or compaction of the soil profile of active agricultural land, no or small impact. The proposed action may irreversibly convert agricultural land to non-agriculture uses, either more than 2 and 1/2 acres if located in an ag district, more than 10 acres if not in an ag district, that's a no or small impact. The proposed action may disrupt or prevent installation of an agricultural land management system, no or small impact. The proposed action may result directly or indirectly in increased development potential or pressure on farmland. I said no or small impact. The proposed project is not consistent with the adopted municipal farmland protection plan. I said no or small impact. Do we generally agree? Yes? Doesn't look like anybody's.
No hands are up.
That's good.
Yeah.
Impacts on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and scenic or aesthetic resource. I said yes on this one. The, so I'll read the questions. The proposed action may be visible from an officially designated federal, state or local scenic or aesthetic resource, no. Proposed action may result in the obstruction, elimination or significant screening of one or more officially designated seen views, no. The proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible damage points. I actually have this one marked as a moderate to large impact based on the current plans and I'd have it for seasonal and year round and the reason being is I think that there's a little bit of more screening that could be done to mitigate this one. If you guys don't agree with me, that's fine, I understand. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. I have it as a moderate to large impact and we'll discuss it during the site plan review, I'm sure. The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action is routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work, that's a moderate to large impact. Recreational tourism based activities, no. Proposed action may cause a diminishment of the public enjoyment or appreciation of this designated aesthetic resource, there isn't one, so no. There are similar projects within the following distance of the proposed project and it has 0 to 5 miles. I said it's a no to small impact. There are obviously projects, you know, in the area, but it's no to small impact to this project. Before we go on, I just want to make sure everybody kind of agrees with the ones I had as moderate to large impacts because what that'll end up getting us to is probably a condition negative declaration where the condition being that we see updated plans that show additional elements that maybe help the visual visualization of the project and/or help, you know, cover some of the project area so it's not seen from the roadway or the houses.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Right. Good. Impact on historic and archaeological resources, we have a no impact letter from SHPO, so I answered no to that question. That's question 10. Question 11, impact on open space and recreation, the proposed action may result in the loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan, no. Impact on critical environment area, it's not in a critical environmental area, so the answer to that is no. Impact on transportation, the proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems, no. Impact on energy, the proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy, no. The impact on noise, odor and light, the proposed action may result in increase in noise, odors or outdoor lighting, the answer is yes. And we'll go through the questions, but the reason it's yes is because during construction, there'll be some noises, but that'll end once construction is done. The proposed action may produce some bad noise levels established by local regulation, no or small impact. The proposed action may result in blasting, no. The proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour per day, no. The proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties, no. The proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions, no. Impact on human health, question 16. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to newer existing sources of contaminants. I answered no. Okay? Consistency with community plans, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. I answered no to that one as well. Consistency with community character, the proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. I wrote no. Anybody want to discuss any of those or we generally agree because that's all of Part 2?
Well, I believe at the time we did our comprehensive plan, this all fit into it. We may have a change after the moratorium, but right now this all fits.
Correct.
Any comments from anyone on the board? Okay, Steve, do you want to make a motion? And you said you want to talk about the conditions?
So the condition negative deck, I think it needs to be, the condition needs to be that we possibly add more, you know, we have to do the site plan review. On the current plans, which is what we're doing the seeker off of, there is some screening showed. We might decide during this meeting that additional screening needs to be showed or we're gonna ask them to reduce the number of calls onto the facility. So the condition would be that they would, you know, listen to our responses and make modifications to the plan. So that's what I, why I would suggest it be a condition negative declaration because the current plans, as they show right now, don't necessarily show what we're going to maybe ask for them to do.
Yes, Jerry?
Kathy, I have a question for the board. Are you able to pass a conditional neg deck for a type 1 action?
Eve Mountain?
That's a, that's a good question. I'm not sure, are you saying, Jerry, that you can't?
I don't believe you can, Steve. I believe that you can only for an unlisted action.
Okay, then, because this is in the ag district at over 10 acres, I think this became a type 1, right?
Correct. So I don't believe you're able to approve or pass a conditional neg deck. So Kathy, I'm sorry, Steve, I wanted to maybe, maybe just discuss the visuals for a moment if I could. I have Nick Havermell with us this evening from our Design Civil team and after we've talked through this and have seen Steve's and the town and the board's comments, we wanted to pass by the board the idea of bringing the screen further to the south and closer to the residents as perhaps a mitigation measure and I trust that Nick might be able to share his screen and share that with you all. But we feel that by moving the screen and the trees and the shrubs further to the south, closer to the property line, might potentially, well, I feel fairly confident, would mitigate the visual impacts. What we want to try to certainly clarify is right now, at least in the record, Steve has asked for additional visual impact analysis to be completed and we just want to make sure that the board, you know, has concluded or has satisfied that aspect of the review. And I guess in short, we're proposing this change in response to that and I guess maybe for further discussion. And I realize Steve has mentioned that, you know, there'd be further site plan review and maybe that's the more appropriate time, but I at least wanted to make the board aware that we are open to moving that screen to perhaps be more effective.
But might I suggest, might I suggest, Kathy, that then if that being the case is that we would get an updated visual impact study? And there was a couple items in Steve Mountain's review letter that had indicated some additional maybe visualizations that were missing, et cetera. So if you're moving them, maybe you don't need them as much, but we still would like to see that report completed. And I would, I would suggest is that, you know, maybe we could do the site plan review at that point in time and then finalize the seeker and be done with it so that it's just a negative declaration.
I think that would be appropriate and that would certainly clarify the record. Now, Steve and Steve, if I may be so kind and all due respect, you've asked for photographic documentation in the backyard of these neighbor homes and residents. We feel that's kind of a tall ask. Are you able to help us accommodate that request for access? We're certainly happy to model those views, but it's difficult for us at this stage to gain access to those private properties for the purposes of having our consultant or otherwise, you know, document current visual conditions.
Yeah, I think that can be accommodated. We can certainly assist in that. That's what we've done, you know, for the other projects. You know, the landowners have been willing to, you know, allow that, you know, for their benefit. So I, we can certainly try to help and assist on that. And I do agree that I think it'd be best to, you know, add, you know, the supplemental seeker information and then it's, then it's done and over with rather than, and I did look up, you definitely cannot do a condition on a type 1. It would actually, you know, move it into a, you know, probably a positive and then a environmental impact statement, which I don't think we need.
Yeah.
No.
So, thank you both for that. I would submit to you that Nick and I and our consultant are prepared to move fairly quickly on this to the extent that we could gain the access, we could obtain the photographic documentation. We'd be able to turn this back to you fairly quickly in hopes that during the next meeting that maybe this could very much well be resolved as discussed.
Okay, well, I guess the most appropriate thing to do now would be to table the seeker.
No.
Pardon me?
Unhand his hand up.
Oh, okay, Dan.
I understand being a planning board member that I need extra scrutiny. I went out today and took some pictures from the, from the border of the people's fields. I think some of you got those pictures. Now, I don't know what much more difference is gonna matter eating up next to their house another 30 feet to visualize something that's gonna be behind the trees that are on Folgers. And we had some, we have a presentation where they have the driveway and the trees on that. Now, if you go the other side of Folgers with that tree line over this other way, it's gonna be about the same kind of visulation on the knoll behind Smith and the ARC properties. Now, I, I guess we gotta do what we gotta do, but I'm sorry, I'm gonna shut up.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone else have any comments? Okay, Dan Lang, is it appropriate, we will table this and we'll, can we get everything done by the next meeting?
Dan Lang here. Yeah, by all means, if that's something you guys are comfortable with tabling it, then table it. It sounds like in Steve's recommendation was in part with what Jerry said, if that's something that's gonna have to occur, then we can get this on for the next meeting. It's, the ball's really in either the planning board or Jerry's court at how you guys want to proceed with this, though, from my perspective. So I'm good with either or and whatever your, if you need more information, you need more information. If not, and you feel like you have enough information, I'm glad that Jerry brought that up about a type 1 action or an unlisted action because you don't obviously want to go through the process again, so that makes complete sense. I'd err on the side of caution as far as not doing this as a negative declaration if you're not comfortable. If you were gonna put any stipulations on that, then I would just hold off until the next meeting as to where everybody's more comfortable with that.
Steve Tanner, do you think we could work some of these out and still do this tonight?
It's hard to see what the visualizations are and I know what Don's saying, but I also understand is that we want to have a complete set of documents that show everything that we've been asking for. And so, you know, I did see the pictures that Don sent over. I think that if those pictures got rendered up with, you know, what the panels look like through those trees, because it did, you know, they are fairly sparse and obviously being wintertime, they would be. But see what the panels look like through the trees on day 0, if there wasn't any screening and then let's see what they look like if there is screening and we can decide whether or not we need the screening. I think that you're gonna be a little bit less challenge, you're gonna get less challenges on our determinations if we have everything that we're looking for here.
Okay, any comments from the board members?
I guess I agree with Steve and then going back to the seeker, number 18, the consistency with community, community character, maybe change that to a yes based on the letter F. The proposed action is inconsistent with the character of natural landscape, but that would be a small impact that could be mitigated through, through the screenings, I would, I would think, kind of to solidify what Steve was saying.
Thank you.
John, was that E that we would say no? Well, we'd say no or small to all of them, yes?
Letter F, the natural landscape, it's a minor, minor impact, but it's definitely not consistent with the natural landscape.
Any more comments? What's your pleasure? What does the board want to do? Do you want to table this?
So if I understand, our options are to either move forward with a negative declaration or table or actually do a positive deck, in which case then there's a whole litany of extra stuff that then has to be done by the applicant. Is that correct? Am I?
That's the way I understand it. Steve Mountain, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And I think the, the least impactful way to do this would be to table it and I would forward that motion to do so. Until, we'll have another meeting this month then for them? I mean, can they have it?
We're gonna have it. We're going to have a meeting on this, on the sixteenth.
So they can have it done by the sixteenth then?
It can be done on the sixteenth.
Not to, not to try to push the project off, but I think that's the proper thing to do and. Um, you know, being as we have some concerns about screening, so.
I'll second that if Paul's making a motion.
I did.
Okay, could we have a roll call, Kim?
Yes. Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Jonathan Long.
Yes.
Steve Tanner.
Yes.
Brooks Holly.
Yes.
Jeremy Lyles.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Kathy Jazinski.
Yes. I hate to say yes, I'd like to get this done, but I also understand that we are scrutinized, we do have, we do want to do everything correctly. And, uh, and we will, and, and we will. Now, we can't go any further without going through the seeker, but we can talk about the screening if that would, uh. If anybody would like to do that, or if you want to talk about something, um, referring to the seeker, we could do that tonight.
We, we, we are prohibited from talking about the, the site plan, right? I mean, we can.
Oh, no, we can talk about it, we just can't take any action yet.
Right, I mean, you know, we, we should be able to go over and, and, uh, uh, basically. Tell them what we think needs to be done based, you know, prior to, to seeing what we think, you know. Actually, you know, I, what the renderings are going to be, is what I'm trying to say. That makes sense to me anyways.
And Jerry, you said you've got a gentleman with you, Nick, uh, is there something that you wanted to present to us tonight?
Yes, Kathy and the board, um, if I may, I think it would be quite helpful if Nick could share his screen and show you what we have in mind. And, and I think it would also be helpful for Steve a- and Dan if they could clarify, you know, the gaps. Just to make sure we're all on the same page on the enhancements that are needed for the current plan.
Yeah, hello, hello everyone, my name is Nick Halvermel, I'm a civil engineer with Cypress Creek. Uh, I will share my screen of our proposed landscaping plans as they are. Uh, host has screen sharing disabled?
Working on it.
All right, thank you. Okay. Think you should all be able to see my screen now. All right, so this is. Our sheet C five hun, or L, L one hundred. Uh, this shows our proposed landscaping on Truesdale one over here. Uh, we're showing the, the buffer along, uh, this southwest corner. And then on this southern edge. Um, I believe, um, Steve Mountain, uh, would like, uh, at least. One of these, uh, backyards to, uh, you know, give yourselves a, uh, a visual rendering from. Um, I was thinking from this house, this is five one zero nine. Um, looking north. Um, and what Jerry was kind of explaining is that we could take this. Um, proposed buffer and move it south, uh, I can do a little drawing here. Um, and if, I think it's basically the same elevation as this, this line here, so it might, might make a little more sense if we moved it down. Towards their, their property lines. Uh, it'd probably help, you know, in the five to ten year range, you know, when those are ten, fifteen feet tall. Um, so that's, that's kind of our proposal for this, this next revision. Um, I think it would be, you know, that what Jerry said is, you know, it'd be super helpful if we could. You know, get permission from, you know, either one of these landowners. Um, I think this is the, uh, the state owned property. Um. But yeah, I think that was kind of the, the difficult part about getting these visuals, you know, from, from a, a private residence is, uh. You know, can be, uh. Not everybody wants, uh, somebody knocking on the door and taking photos out their backyard. Um, here's Truesdale two, uh, looking, this is Ellicott Street. Here, uh, we're showing our landscape buffer on this, uh, southeast corner. Uh, there is tree line, you know, that we're, we're going to leave all along this property line. That should help those visuals from, from the, the roadside. Uh, and all this is staying as well, so it should be. Uh, pretty well screens, um, but we are looking up, up a hill as, uh, as Don said, the, up the knoll. I don't know if, uh. If we have any more suggestions on, you know, if we're going to get out there another time and do a rendering. Obviously, would like to get this one for you guys, uh, if there's any other locations. Um, it would be, you know, important to get that on a, on a next site visit. Yep, go ahead.
On your first map there, okay, yeah, so. The, the triangles are just, uh, flat area, correct?
Yeah, that's like, uh, a meadow pollinator mix, so that's just, you know, a grass.
A grass, basically, okay, so, coming down here, um. Uh, what about the, uh, from this, the east side of this project where the, where the grass is that you had planted? Um, what, what's, what's the buffer on that east side? Uh, well, as I'm looking at it, east side would be the, the right hand side of the screen. In, interior and exterior from what's on the other side of that, or?
Like, like this line here?
Yeah.
So there is a tree line there.
Okay.
Um, this is the property line, so anything obviously over the property line where we won't be touching.
I understand.
So there is, you know, this, this tree line, you can see the, the kind of squiggly buffer. Um, so that's existing and it, it will remain.
Do we have any pictures from over there so we can kind of see what kind of quality of trees there are right there?
Nick, can you switch over to Google Earth maybe?
Yeah. All right, yeah, so this was actually, it was actually this property line, so we are keep, we are keeping these, this, this tree, this tree line here.
Okay.
This would be where we would propose, you know, moving this landscape buffer south to here to get a little closer to the residences.
Okay.
Um, and then, and then this tree line would be the other eastern property line that, um, we won't, we won't be clearing. And you can see further out, you know, there is a, we did have in that visual analysis, uh, one, one view from Ellicott Street Road. Uh, approximately in this location looking, uh, northwest, and, uh, there was, there was. Uh, if you look at the visual analysis, there was almost no, no view of any panels from, from that, even, even in our winter.
So, so down, uh, I guess, uh, the elegant street roadside, you know, see where the red dotted line is?
Mm-hmm.
Inside of the red dotted line is a, my green and white dotted line, right?
Yes.
Right, right, right inside there, yeah, um.
Yes.
So, so, um, this is, this is not. This is public property, somebody owns this, there are houses there, right? So why would you not put a, a secondary buffer zone? Um, back, there are some type of buffer zone that would, um, you know, uh. I guess is, I don't, I don't know what they are, what those houses are, and one of them looks like a barn with no entrance to it, so. You know, if somebody builds on that, I get, well, I don't know, I guess it's maybe. There's trees there already, so I guess it's probably not that big a deal.
Yeah, and I'll show you, let me minimize just so we can look at both together. So this is, this is, uh, part of the property here.
Okay.
And that's where that barn is.
Okay.
Um, so that would be included, I, I think.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, they, they wouldn't be able to subdivide that, uh, just, you know, we, we are doing that subdivision to get.
And you're, and you're using an entrance on that other part of the property anyways, I see.
Yeah, yep.
It doesn't really, there is already a tree line there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay.
Hey, anyone else have questions?
The only, Kathy, this is Paul McCullough, the only other question I have, not so much as buffer, but the number of telephone poles going in, electrical poles.
Hmm.
Um, like the projects down on our side of Main Street. They got rid of a couple poles, so there's only three of them showing minimized that as best they can. What's the proposal for poles on both sites?
Jerry, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'm going to start and I'm going to turn it over to Nick, I will just start by saying that that is completely under National Grid's purview. Um, we have very little flexibility on what, um, you know, on leeway around that. Um, just for clarity, we do have that pole lineup shown in the visual analysis that we provided. Um, I might encourage you to take a look at it, I asked them to make it as realistic as possible. Um, for clarity, those poles, you know, obviously serve a purpose. Um, they either have metering on them or switching on them. Um, and it allows National Grid, if you will, in an emergency to come out and turn us off if they need to. Um, but there is a, a specified lineup that would be going into the property as opposed to alongside it. Um, and I'll turn it over to Nick to clarify the number.
Yeah, so currently what is shown, we have our interconnection points, uh, across the street, that's with the utility. Um, and then there are one, two, three, four, five, or, let's see. One, two, three, four, five, that are supposed to be a part of the utility. And then three that are ours, um, we do include, include a re-closer pole on our property. Um, on our line, part of the lineup, uh, that's additional protection, uh, to help the grid from any backflow if anything goes wrong. My only thought on this is, you know, usually the utility wants, you know, they like the, the straight lineup, they like it. Uh, you know, within a certain distance to their connection, um, that's kind of the, the reasoning that it's closer to, to the street.
Well, the, the reason I bring it up is there was a concern with poles on the two solar projects down on West Main. There was originally, I believe, five poles proposed to it, the developer managed to get. The utility or, or themselves, for, for lack of a better term. To eliminate two of the poles, there's utility boxes right on the ground. And it looks visually, it looks a heck of a lot better than what. The one is out on Route thirty-three with, you know, six poles sticking in the middle of the field, even though it's. Not parallel to the road, it's perpendicular to it. But when you go driving down the road, you see this mass of telephone poles, mass of wires. And when you look at the one on West Main, it actually looks.
Better. Yeah, Paul, the last, I think, three or four reviews, they've come in asking for like six to seven poles and we've gotten down to three or four.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I'm.
That's kind of the answer, is, is there anything that can be ground mounted versus on a pole? And, you know, if they all have to be on a pole, can we get documentation of that from National Grid? Because these other areas were also National Grid customers and we were able to do them with less poles.
Nick, you said three of those poles were, um, Cypress Creek, what are those poles that you could ground mount equipment on?
Yeah, they, they are, uh, it, it's typically not what we, we like to do, but it, it, they can be ground mounted, um, it just.
The reason I'm saying with the utility poles, one of, one of the first projects we did solar, um. You know, I had, I believe, six or, might even had eight, because it was two projects side by side, and it's just an eyesore with the, all the utility poles lined up. I think that's one of the biggest eyesores of the, of the project that, that was there. And I, I really don't want to repeat that, you know, in this instance. Like, uh, Steve and Paul mentioned, you know, National Grid required five or six poles, but we pretty much pared those down to three. Um, on past, the most recent, recent projects. Um, so I kind of agree with Steve Tanner. If Cypress Creek is saying we can't eliminate some of those poles, I, I would think something from National Grid saying that, you know, there's no, no possible way. Would be, uh, you know, should be submitted to the board.
Jerry, you're muted.
I hate to impose on the board, John or Paul, would it be possible for you to maybe send us a photo of that arrangement? Um, my only thought would be, I'd like to think that National Grid engineers are the same team that are approving this. But it's possible that a case manager that we're working with may be different between the two projects, let's say. And I'm more than happy to take up, you know, the, the discussion with Grid about this, um, to the extent that we could show them, you know. Which you would think they'd know about, but any ammunition that we could have might be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, bo- both of the projects are on my way into work, so tomorrow morning I'll grab the pictures. Uh, I think I got everyone's email, so I can shoot it right off tomorrow morning.
Thanks, Paul.
Uh, Steve Mountain or Dan, I mean, they, they were all shown on the site plans when we approved those two projects, is that something that, that we could send, is that, uh, publicly available?
Yeah, this is Dan Lang, but yes, I could send something over as well to Jerry Hemmett.
Thanks, Dan.
From, from our perspective and you, uh, I know you've gotten back already on some of the stuff, Jerry, um, from Steve Mountain's, uh, letter I was just reviewing here. The one that I, I guessed did pop up to us, and we are going to be, uh, as far as the staff goes, we're, we're hoping that we can get through that part of it, was the, uh. The glare study report, um, this is the first that, that we have seen a glare study, uh. Come back to the town of Batavia, um, that's not showing any glare on the green, yellow, red system. Um, green being, you know, you're clear, there's no glare at all, yellow being, there's a little bit red, meaning, you know, we have a glare problem. Um, we have not had another study come back in the town of Batavia that has shown completely no glare whatsoever. And that triggered a little bit of, on our end, just making sure that maybe when, um. If the planning board should agree with us and request it, that a, once this is installed. That another glare report just be done, so we definitely know and we're satisfied that there really isn't an issue. For the houses or any houses in the area as far as the glare goes. Um, and I think really what triggered that is we saw the report come in and said there's zero glare, I've, we've never seen that, I'm not saying that that's not possible. It's just something new throughout this process to us that we haven't seen yet. Um, therefore, I think we're looking a little bit more into it and, and trying to figure out the realization of. Is if there is no glare in this, then we can get away with there being no glare anywhere else. And if that's what we're going to set forth, then fantastic. We're going to save a lot of headaches of solar and complaints in the future. But I think we just need to be reassured well, and that's, that's my, um, my look on the glare study. For the planning board, but just take that under perspective when looking at this, please.
Thank you.
Kathy, if I may, and Dan, thank you for that observation, um, you know, my, my first reaction would be there are a few different models that are used for glare analysis. Um, so there could be some differences in the modeling, I, I've talked through this with Nick. Um, our, our professional engineers are prepared to stamp, uh, a study and review it as needed, um, you know, to, to clarify the record, so. We have no problem with that.
Hey, is there anyone else that has, has something they'd like to add?
So far.
Um, the only thing on the glare would I be was the, uh, the, uh, knoll and, uh, sloping to the north. Uh, that might be why there's no glare indicated.
It is a rather unique site that it is at a knoll and then slopes north, so.
Thank you for that. Do we have anything else we'd like to talk about?
Just Kathy, one other thing on the loose end and sorry to bog this meeting down, Steve.
We get, we've got all the time in the world, Jerry, go ahead.
Steve, as far as gaining access to what Nick alludes to to be the ARC property, which I suspect might be a public property, maybe not, could you guide us on how we can expeditiously go about getting getting that that photograph taken?
Yeah, I I think internally, we'll we'll talk to see who's available out there and get up and contact them as soon as we can. ARC, it wouldn't, it really isn't a public property. But they obviously would probably, you know, not have a problem with it, nor probably many of them.
Great.
Okay, anything else? I'm not rushing you, I'm just trying to move this, to give everyone the opportunity. Does anyone else have anything to say? Well, I I'm thinking, Kim, did we take a vote on tabling the seeker?
Yes, we did.
We did, okay. Okay, so our our seeker is tabled, we've had a great discussion, this is the best I've seen in a long time. I just, I just want to make sure you all understand everything, we're gonna come back on the sixteenth. We'll send you all the information so everyone can review it and be ready to come back on the sixteenth and vote on the the seeker, the site plan, and the special use permit. Is there any questions about the special use permit? Okay. Well, then we we're going to go back to our agenda, which I don't know what I did with it. Next thing would be zoning officer report.
Kathy, our team's gonna sign off. Thank you very much, everyone, and board members have a good evening.
And we'll see you on the sixteenth.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all your input.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Okay, so Dan, Dan, I see Bruce is there, hello, Bruce. I hear you've got some news for us.
He's muted.
You're muted, Bruce Gerald.
Still muted there, Bruce.
Okay.
Gee, I don't know what that nu- news would be, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Okay, I just, I just heard it, when you're ready, you're ready.
I'll let the cat out of the bag, I'm gonna be retiring April ninth.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We're certainly gonna miss you.
I hope so.
Okay, so we've we've got Bruce and Dan here, and we've got a zoning enforcement officer report. What have we got?
I have, I have nothing else that we have sent over to the county, we are still waiting on the-
Olive Garden? I'm just kidding.
We're still waiting, we're still waiting on the seeker for the other solar next to G C E D C's over there, we've never received the the full E A I or the full part one, the long form, we've yet to receive it, so we're still waiting on that before we can do anything. Other than that, we have nothing that I know of going to the county unless it comes in tomorrow, which is our deadline. And if it does, you'll be the first to know, Kathy, I, we don't have anything else in right now. I'm unfortunately not retiring, and fortunately not retiring anytime soon, so.
So we still got Dan, we're gonna lose Bruce, but we still got Dan.
We do have something hopefully on the horizon, I thought they'd be in here by now, but Chipotle is looking into moving into the old Metro mattress or extremely, the one over there in Core Plaza. We'd hope they'd have their information into us by now, so we could get it into the county, but they haven't, so. Perhaps next month.
It looks like it might be next month, we're hoping.
But they were gonna come with Panera Bread, and Panera Bread's not coming? Aren't they the ones-
I haven't heard of people about that.
Okay, okay, well, thank, thank you very much.
Dan, Dan, I got one question for us, Paul. The the dialysis place over by Home Depot. Is that, is that an operation?
Yes, it's been an operation, it's actually fairly busy as well, it was.
I never see any cars over there.
You you never do, nor do I. But they've got, they've got a very busy list, they've had a very busy list, I shouldn't speak in the past few months, I have no idea. But when we were originally over there, I know that they were booking like crazy, because it's a close dialysis place for a lot of people.
Yeah.
But I would agree, the vehicles in the parking lot, it always seems empty.
Yeah, well, I I was over there, yeah, I was there at lunchtime today, and it's like, there's two cars.
I was thinking, I was thinking-
My guess would be is because dialysis process takes, you know, sometimes those folks are there three, four hours, maybe longer, that other family members or whoever is dropping them off. One thing due to COVID, they don't stick around, they go shopping somewhere else. Everything, other things on their list, and they come back and pick up the the people. Along with, like I say, the social distancing with COVID and everything, they're not allowed in there, that would be my guess.
Oh, okay, yeah, makes sense.
Yeah.
One one last quick thing, Kathy.
Yes, Dan.
I am kind of hoping that at one of these points, because we were just talking about some restaurants and stuff, that Steve Tanner would share some of his smoked food with us at the town of Batavia. I don't know for sure if he's ready to get into that business, but we're, we are looking forward to that, if he plans on moving forward, we'll we'll assist in any way possible.
Does that include smoked salmon?
I do that too, yeah, I do a little bit of everything.
Sounds good. Okay, we all know on the the sixteenth will be a busy day, we're gonna finish what we didn't do today. Be prepared for it, read everything we send you, if you have questions, ask. If there's anything we can do to help you, we will. Right, Dan and Bruce and Steve Mountain?
Yes.
Does Steve Mountain have anything else to say to add?
No, you guys done an excellent job tonight. Again, the, you know, the visual part is really, you know, all planning board, we just want to point out what we do and don't have as far as materials, so. Very good job tonight.
Yeah, I thought so too, everybody did a good job, thank you very much. I'll see. I have nothing else to add, if there isn't anything else, where's Brooks?
Yep, I'm here.
Motion by Brooks, seconded by by Steve Tanner? Is he still here?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much, I'll see you on the sixteenth, but keep in touch.
Thank you.